This July 19th, 2012 Cookville City Council meeting to order. Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilman Anderson.
Present.
Councilman Woodford.
Present.
Mayor Swallows.
Here.
Vice Mayor Epp.
Here.
Councilman Albright.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Would everyone please stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Are these on? Can you guys hear us?
No, they're not.
Just speak up then. Alright, consider approval of agenda. Any additions, subtractions from the agenda?
No change.
Alright, seeing none, do we have a motion for approval?
It's time moved.
Second.
Alright, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Consider approval of minutes of council meeting held on July 5th, 2012. Do we have a motion for approval of the minutes?
It's all moved.
Second.
Alright, everybody vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Alright, item three. Consider on second and final reading, Ordinance 120609, amendments to the zoning code relating to automobile manufacturing in the CI, Commercial Industrial Mixed Use District, sponsors Mr. James Mills.
Mayor and council members, as you stated, mayor of this ordinance would amend the zoning code so that automobile manufacturers and automobile component parts and supply manufacturers are permitted use in the CI, Commercial Industrial Mixed Use Zone. The amendment has been approved by the Planning Commission, is recommended by the Planning Department. We've received no calls or comments since first reading.
Thank you. Do we have a motion for approval?
It's all moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments from the council?
This is just a correction we overlooked because, well, with Volkswagen being in Chattanooga in that close, we're hoping to attract second or third tier manufacturing. We don't want to exclude them for the new industrial park.
It's good planning, actually.
Yeah, right.
Alright, anything else? Seeing none, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Alright, item four. Consider on second and final reading, Ordinance 120610, amendments to the zoning code, Section 220, CN, Neighborhood Commercial, to add uses permitted on review, single-family attached dwellings and condominiums subject to special conditions, sponsors Mr. James Mills.
Mayor and council members, the proposed amendments are included on the screen. Amendments have been approved by the Planning Commission, are recommended by the Planning Department, and we've received no calls or comments since first reading.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Mills. Do we have a motion for approval?
It's all moved.
Second.
Questions, comments?
The only comment that I have to make is that years ago, I participated in a study that studied the neighborhoods of Cook-- well, not the neighborhoods, but studied Cookville, and one of the recommendations was to have more townhouses than condominiums because oftentimes that is a first step for people to get into home ownership, and we definitely want that is more people to own their own homes, if possible.
Alright, anybody else? They're working now. Anything from the audience? Seeing none, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Alright, on to new business. Item five, hold a public hearing and consider on first reading, Ordinance 120608, adopting amendments to the Cookville 2030 Plan, sponsors Mr. James Mills.
Mayor and council members, the Cookville Planning Commission has approved and certified to the council amendments to the transportation plan and development plan elements of the Cookville 2030 Plan. The amendments are related to the construction of a new interchange on Interstate 40 at Bennett and Minlet Creek Roads and to the northern extension of Bennett Road to State Highway 70 North. TDOT has indicated that the new interchange would be completed or scheduled to be completed by fall of 2015. Of course, as you know, the new interchange will provide direct interstate access to the Highlands Industrial Business Park, which is scheduled to be completed later this year. TDOT has indicated that as a condition for the completion of the interchange, connector streets have to be constructed to the north and south of the interchange to the nearest major street or state highway. The southern connector street consisting of the construction of the Highlands Park Boulevard and the widening and realignment of Lee Sermanay Road to South Willow Avenue will be completed later this year. The Bennett Road extension to Highway 70 North would serve as the northern connector. Originally, as you know, TDOT indicated that the mandatory construction of the northern connector would be required to be constructed with four lanes, have 250 feet of rideaway, and would only be accessible at existing streets. So it would be Buffalo Valley Road, Highway 70, and at I-40. For several months, we negotiated with TDOT over these standards, and they agreed to a reduction in the rideaway to 160 feet and to the initial construction of only two lanes. They also agreed to allow additional access points, provided that we took the steps of amending our land use plan, our 2030 plan, to show these access points. So that's what this is all related to. Our current major street plan, the I-40 interchange, is identified as project number one, and the extension of Bennett Road is identified as a portion of project two. Let me note here that the numbers one and two do not indicate priority. They were just a numbering system that's been used, so it doesn't mean it was the number one priority project of the number two, but that's how they are identified currently in our plan. The location of four proposed access points, our intersections on Bennett Road, have been identified, along with the general locations of connecting streets from the intersections to existing public streets. The intersections and connecting streets are positioned to provide maximum access to the parcels along the proposed extension. Excuse me. In doing this, we contacted most of the property owners that were directly affected by Bennett Road or have frontage along Bennett Road to gather their opinions on where these connecting streets and access points should go. As proposed, the connecting streets would be classified as local streets consisting of rights away between 50 and 60 feet, and the actual location of the connecting streets would be determined by the owners of the abutting properties, when and if their properties are developed. So there's no immediate plans for the construction of these connecting streets, and also their construction is not planned by the city. We're not planning to construct them ourselves. It would be done by, when the properties are developed, by the property owners. The four intersections would be constructed or could be constructed as part of the Bennett Road extension. The four access points that we proposed are identified as projects 35 through 38 in the amendments to the major street plan. Project 35 consists of an intersection approximately 700 feet south of the Nashville and Eastern Railroad Rideaway, with local streets connecting to Ridge Dale Drive and Locust Grove Road. Project 36 consists of an intersection located approximately 1,400 feet south of Buffalo Valley Road, with local streets connecting to Reeser Lane and to Buffalo Valley Road. Project 37 consists of an intersection approximately 1,500 feet south of Project 36, with local streets connecting to Reeser Lane and Hawkins Crawford Road, and Project 38 consists of an intersection approximately 1,500 feet north of Interstate 40, with local streets connecting to Minlet Creek Road and Hawkins Crawford Road. In addition to the amendments to the transportation plan element, the Planning Commission has also approved amendments to the future land use plan element of the 2030 Plan, and this is directly related to land use development along the proposed Bennett Road extension. Here's the current land use plan. The extension of the Bennett Road is located entirely within the city's urban growth boundary. However, only a small portion is currently located within the corporate limits, and the city has intentions to annex territory so that the entire street would be located within the city. And when we annex the property, we'll have to establish zoning. And when we establish zoning, it needs to be done in compliance with our land use plan. So however we zone this area should be shown or in compliance with the land use plan. As you can see on the current land use map, and this is the Bennett Road area through here to orient you, this is 70, this is the fifth interchange, this is Buffalo Valley Road. But with the exception of an area along Highway 70 on properties currently outside the city, all the territory except for an area along 70 is shown as residential, low density residential. This area is within the city, it's shown commercial, but the entire rest of Bennett Road extension, except right at 70, is currently shown as residential. Now, we've looked at several different factors that affect development, including existing land use, transportation facilities, natural factors, fiscal factors, existing and planned utilities in the vicinity of the Bennett Road extension, and after reviewing this, we're of the opinion that some of these properties may be better suited for something other than low density residential. So in order to accomplish that, the land use plan had to be amended. Here's the revised or the proposed amended land use plan that's been approved by the Planning Commission. The amendments are, there are three basic components of the amendments. There's an extension of an area depicted as being best suited for mixed-use commercial industrial development along Bennett Road at I-40, so it would be this area right in here. I'll go back to the old map so you can see the difference. So it would be this extension through here. The Planning Commission was of the opinion, and so is the Planning Department, this is an area that we will most likely see the earliest commercial development, and we believe this area would be most appropriate for commercial or commercial industrial development. The second expansion, or second change, is an expansion of an area depicted as local commercial south of Highway 70 North, south through the railroad rideaway, and that's this area right in here, this red striped area. Again, I'll go back to the old map, so the expansion is down into here. This is West Haven, So Division. This is the area where the junkyard is, is what this primarily includes. The third change is the expansion of an area depicted as commercial industrial mixed use south of the railroad rideaway to just east of Locust Grove Road. So currently, this area right in here is shown as residential. And this is the proposed change, right in here, and this is also where a new access point is proposed. This is an area that, for many years, has been identified by officials from the Chamber of Commerce and others, as an area that has a lot of potential for commercial or industrial development. One of the main points of this is railroad access, and this property is relatively flat. So this was the other proposal for the change in the land use plan. And as I stated earlier, these amendments have been approved by the Planning Commission, and they're recommended by the Planning Department. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to try and answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Do we have a motion for approval?
It's all moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments from the council?
Pretty clear.
Any questions, comments from the audience? If you would please come forward and state your name, and if you could keep it to three minutes, that'd be greatly appreciated.
Yes, my name is Linda Owens. My mother and I have property that we received in an agreed order with the city and the county. Six acres on the north side, that's in this little triangle here, right on the north side of the Interstate I-40. The proposal, part of the agreement was done with the understanding that the map would be as it was proposed, and as it's still proposed by TDOT, that the, this 38 is much lower, so that there would be some road frontage there at the east end of that triangle. The agreed order indicated that the city had no control over what the state would do, but the state has this map showing the same location it had in 2010, and the city is initiating that this be changed with this amendment that moves this road, 38, 1,000 feet further north. This movement is being initiated by the city, not by the state. If the state changes it, it will be following this amendment that the city is proposing and is working on. And this is in direct disagreement with what our agreed order was, with that the city would not initiate something that would create a problem for this section of property that we have, and this directly does. It takes away all road frontage and makes access almost inaccessible.
When this was approved by the Planning Commission, this doesn't show it, but this doesn't change that current connection that they have right in here. This would be a separate, or at least when the Planning Commission approved this, this would be a separate or additional access point. Our plans, and as I stated earlier, these connecting streets would be built by the property owners when they're developed. We're not saying that this could, that this would be. You know, I do understand that TDOT has looked at moving the current alignment, their current proposed alignment of Minlet Creek and Hawkins Crawford Roads to the north, but that doesn't mean that this is not a second or additional project.
It's only 300 feet, too, isn't it?
Well, the last proposal I saw, and the issue there--
That's initiated by TDOT, it was not initiated by us.
That's correct. And the issue was, I believe, Greg, you correctly, it was stacking distance at I-40, it was too close, the intersection was too close to safely stack traffic, and they initiated moving it further north. It doesn't, the latest proposal that I've seen does not line up with this proposed intersection.
Okay.
Can I speak again?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
The map that you have on the existing website that you show does not show that it's been moved. The redesign of the interstate has not gone into effect. TDOT still has the same map that they had in 2010. If they redesign it, they may be redesigning it to accommodate your change, but your change is coming before TDOT's, not after.
This and what they have, they're two completely different roads.
So they're going to have this existing road, 500 feet, and you're going to have another one at the other thousand?
That's correct.
So there's going to be two roads here?
That's correct.
And TDOT will not change their website documents until those plans, that's a content plan, they actually will have designs complete, and those plans should be up in August, and they'll have public meetings for that. But they have indicated to us preliminarily, their access road would move about 300 feet to the north, but the website's not going to have that in front yet.
Well, it's not official yet. I mean, if they're talking about it, it hasn't been decided.
That is correct.
Again, if that's, you know, I have no objections to that, because we designed, we determined the placement of the property that we chose out of the 65 acres, we took 15, and we took six of those acres, which is what, three fifths of the acres, at this northern, and with assurance that we would have access, and that was always recommended. This, obviously, if the interchange was there, this first road that you have, 38, there would be no access. It would be a long way to get to access, as a matter of fact.
I don't know anything about your agreed order, well, I don't know--
Well, I would think you did, but, I mean, again, I just need some assurance. So you're saying that TDOT's road is still going to go underneath this one? That that's not going to, this proposal, that your 38, is not going to affect where TDOT places their--
As far as I know, it doesn't, but I don't know what the final TDOT, I don't know, any of us know what the final TDOT plans are. I mean, I think it's still in flux, what they actually will do.
But my concern is that this is coming first, and I didn't want this to initiate--
What we've tried to indicate here is where an ideal location for an intersection. I'm not, I don't know, I'm not privy to what your agreement was. I mean, Mr. Rider, maybe you can, I don't know.
Well, this blue line, this number 38, is an imaginary road. It's not fixed there at all, it's just potential to be there, and it's not going to be built wherever the people who own this land want to build it. It's not decided at all. This is just--
And this has nothing to do with what TDOT decides to do?
This is all theoretical, has nothing to do with the state of Tennessee, I understand it at all.
TDOT's old treaty plans were back in March, and based on their traffic count and survey, there was not enough room for the stackability on the interchange, and you couldn't get enough cars, as you would do.
So you're saying TDOT initiated moving at 1,500 feet?
They only moved at 300 feet.
It moved at 300, so now it's 800 feet?
No.
I mean, it's 800 feet. So you're saying there's going to be a road at 800 feet and then at 1,500 feet?
All I'm saying is that what I've seen from TDOT preliminarily is that they're moving it about 300 feet to the north, from where it initially was.
From the 400, 500, where it was initially?
300 feet from where it was initially.
And it was 500 feet?
I have no idea what it was.
Well, do you know what it was? You don't know?
300 feet from what you're looking at on the website.
Correct, and you don't know what that, how many feet that is?
Feet from what?
From the interstate. Yeah, from the interstate. You're saying it's moving 300 feet further, further than what? Further than the 300, 400, 500?
I don't know, Greg, do you know the distance?
The original location where Minlet Creek and Hawkins Crawford Road intersected, the original plan is moving 300 feet to the north from that location, which is low.
That's what I'm asking, what was the original location?
I don't know.
You don't know?
No.
I mean, we can scale it off, see. I don't remember what that distance was.
That has nothing to do with this blue line. This blue line is an imaginary road. I mean, it doesn't even, the city is not going to build it, and it would be up to whoever owned the land to build it and to locate it wherever they wanted to within the boundary of their property. It's purely--
So it has nothing to do with the, where TDOT decides to?
Mr. Mayor.
No. May I interrupt?
May I just interrupt for a second? Ms. Owens, with all due respect, I really appreciate you taking the time to come up here and ask a lot of questions. I don't think this is the venue to do this.
No, I misunderstood.
I think there is a place for you to do that, but obviously, there's a lot of mis-, not misinformation, there's a lot of questions without a lot of really good answers. TDOT will be able to provide those answers. We can certainly provide answers that we know about. What we're trying to do on the council, the way I understand it, is just get our land use policy, our 2030 land use policy, to jive with what we are theoretically going to do. There's, so far, you know, I'm new to this, too, and I'm overwhelmed with the steps that we have taken, the many tiny little bitty steps we take in order to get this road in its final, into its final point. So there's going to be a lot of other venues and opportunities for you to get a chance to make sure that the access points get placed where it has the least amount of damage to you and your property. And one of the things that I have learned so far is that these access roads, I mean, we've got to put them somewhere, and TDOT's got to have them somewhere, and at some point in time, when the developer decides what they want to do, we'll sit down with the developer, I know I will, if I'm on this council, and I know the Planning Commission will do that, sit down with the developer and make sure that these roads are going to be at the most, at the most best point. So I just don't think this is the venue, the venue for this.
Well, it does have a lot to do with the value of the property, that you be able to access it, because it's, you know, it has interstate visibility and you'd like to be able to get there.
And I really understand your point, and I really want you to have the opportunity to raise that, but right now, there's a lot of questions going on. All we're trying to do here is just get our land use plan passed, so we can kind of keep these steps moving. If we bog it down here, I mean, if we don't pass it here, it's just going to be bogged down, and so I think you have an opportunity to, if you want to continue to ask questions, that's your right to, but I think maybe we can solve this in a better place at a better time.
I think you need to speak with TDOT, because I don't think this blue line, this number 38, is, I think TDOT is totally independent of that, and that is just something that theoretically could happen. Sometimes the city's not going to build that road, and there's no guarantee that road's even going to be at that location, the way I understand it.
Well, I think the last time I came to, that you said that you didn't have any control over TDOT decided that, that you didn't decide it, but, I mean, this is something you're deciding 38 is, or somebody is deciding, not TDOT.
It's there theoretically. Nobody is making a plan to build that road, 38, or whatever we want to call it. It has to be there for the 2030 Plan, but when the time comes and there's a road that is needed there, that will be decided then by the developers with, am I--
The key thing here is, according to TDOT, we have to show access points, additional access points on Bennett Road extension to be able to have them in the future. If we don't show them there, they can deny us based on, we're borrowing money to build this. It doesn't make, we've not shown it in our plans, we've not planned for it, no, you can't tie them to Bennett Road. So we've shown the access points. They've also conditioned this, that if we show access points, we must show connecting streets branching out from there to existing county roads or public roads. The location of those are theoretical, imaginary, for lack of a better term. The location will be determined at some point in the future, we don't know where that is.
There's going to be lots of opportunities, and I think this is not the place for it, and I would encourage you, when that point in time comes up, just to bring your guns out and come in blazing on that one, but for here, I don't think it's necessary.
Well, I think the confusion--
I do appreciate hearing that.
--for me was that the road connects exactly like the road that did connect previously, it's just higher up, because it connected to the same two streets, and it's not very far from the existing road that would be built by the TDOT. So I think that was, lies in the confusion.
Okay. Just keep in mind, this is a 2030 Plan, so this is what the state has asked us as city leaders and city departments, what do you think is going to happen in the next 18 years? And this hypothetically, we think in the next 18 years, this is probably the best land use that we foresee at this point. That doesn't mean it won't change. This is for the next 18 years, we have to have a plan in order for TDOT to continue to work with you, and so that's what we're doing here. So nothing, none of this is in concrete, this is just how we foresee things in potentially the next 18 years, and so all of it is still, you know, still on the table.
Yeah, it's a work in process.
You know, it's close to me, I mean, one road, the existing road that TDOT's doing, and then this road, I mean, we're just talking about 500, 600 feet, I mean--
Let me say one other thing about the intersections. They are, a lot of thought and planning has gone into the location of these proposed intersections. They're, in most places, where multiple parcels will be able to get on to Bennett Road, so that we don't landlot properties. So these intersections are, they do have some flexibility, but they've been designed and located for maximum access and maximum development potential, the intersections, but not, how the streets go in there, again, are going to depend on how the individuals develop their properties. Some of these proposed locations of these access roads, let me go back to the major street plan, or maybe the area of this, they go through multiple parcels. So you're going to have, for this road to actually connect in places, you're going to have to, several different property owners agree to get together to do this, or you're going to have to have some developer, large developer, come in and purchase all those properties to be able to build these connecting roads. But again, we have, we had to show the connecting roads, and that's where we had the most difficulty in this whole process, was trying to identify where these connecting roads would go to existing county roads, but we had, TDOT required that we do that, at least show that we've given some planning, some forethought where they should go.
Mr. Mills, I want to thank you and the Planning Commission for all the work that you have put into this. I'd like to call the question.
Yeah, I'm ready to vote.
All vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Alright, on to item six. Consider appointment to the Cookville Regional Medical Center Board of Trustees, sponsor, I'm the sponsor, Mayor Swallows. I would like to recommend Ms. Marilyn Gray for the Cookville Regional Medical Center Board of Trustees. She is, she has a lot of experience. She has, first off, she's certified public administrator, she taught school for a few years, she's also a former county commissioner. And when we, when we talk about the Cookville Regional Medical Center Board, it is a huge, huge commitment. It is, it's a seven-year commitment, and someone has to be, not only have the time, but be willing to do that, and Ms. Marilyn Gray is willing to do that, and we all feel like, or at least I do, I think we all feel that she would be a great appointment to the board and would bring great knowledge and insight to the board. So I recommend Ms. Marilyn Gray for the RMC Board of Trustees.
Can you make the motion, or as a chair?
I'll bring it to you as a motion, how about that?
Okay, then we'll second.
Alright, second. Any discussion?
I want to thank Marilyn for coming onto this board and being willing to serve her community, her city, and the region in working with CRMC. And I also want to thank Steve Qualls, this is the physician that Marilyn is replacing. Mr. Qualls served on the hospital board, and I believe that Marilyn will bring a good view to the board, and one thing I know about her for sure is, hard worker doesn't begin to describe how she is when it comes to her work ethic. She is beyond that, and I appreciate her coming forth and wanting to do this. So, thank you, Marilyn.
I think we had, we had a few other names in there, too, but Marilyn did stand out above the rest of them, and I think that-- above the rest of them, and I think that actually, we, we had some really good people that, that were considered, and I've worked with Marilyn in Junior Women's Club, which seems like many years ago.
Junior?
Watch yourself, Larry.
Just don't get, don't get ugly.
But she is, she is a good worker. She's not intimidated by a, a male board, and she, she will serve very well.
Yes. Yes. I'd like to thank Marilyn also. It's, for somebody to step up, we've said this many times before, and when we have people in the community to step up and volunteer for one of the committees, it's, it's very much appreciated, and for somebody like Marilyn to step up, as well qualified as she is, to make a commitment for seven years, I commend her on that. She's just a generally nice person and well-qualified and a smart lady, and we're glad to have you on board. Thank you.
Anything else? Seeing none, all vote?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right, item seven, consider awarding bid for poly-orthophosphate sponsors Water Quality Control Department, Mr. Ronnie Kelly.
Mayor and council, we opened bids on poly-orthophosphate that we use at the water treatment plant, have two items, and the low bidder meets in spec, and we'd recommend their approval.
Wake up, Larry.
Uh, do I have a motion for approval?
Some move.
Second.
Does anybody have any questions over the poly-orthophosphate?
Can you, can you draw that, can you draw that, that ring, that organic chemistry? That was a question they asked me. I'm a chemistry minor.
He's the chemistry guy.
But I couldn't, I couldn't do it. Could you show us what it was? I can get it for you tomorrow.
Matt's been practicing all week how to pronounce that.
Had to make sure I had that right. Any questions, any comments, anyone?
What, what does it do?
It's a corro-, well, the ortho is a corrosion inhibitor, and then the poly is sort of a sequestering agent that keeps everything, the metals-
It's a sequestered things, that's right, yeah.
It, it sort of sequesters the metals in the, that's already soluble in the water, keeps them there instead of being black specks.
It might be like making sausage, you just don't wanna know.
You don't want black? What, black specks in your-
Just enjoy the result.
It doesn't have anything to do with pink slime or anything, does it? No, no.
All right, all vote.
Thank you.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Mr. Kelly. All right, we're, we're through with our part of the program. This, this is where we like to open the floor to hear from citizens and or delegations. If you'd like to speak on anything, feel free to come forward and state your name, and anything you'd like to say for three minutes. If not, anything from the council?
I wanna remind everybody that this coming Monday night is the, I believe it's the last community band presentation at Dogwood Park. I've been to almost all of those concerts, and they're very well attended, and it's a great time to get out and enjoy the, the great talent that these community members have. They, in the band, there are people that are high school students, all the way to retirees who play, and they make some beautiful music, so I would really encourage people to come to Dogwood Park on Monday night for that community band. It's seven o'clock.
Okay. I've got something. This weekend, on Saturday, Cityscape is having a fundraiser over on the west side. They're gonna be selling t-shirts. I'll be there from like 10 to 2, and I've bought one of them. They're very attractive.
Let me see.
And it's all about saving the sign over there, so if you're gonna be on, in town on Saturday, come by the west side. Thank you.
I wanna congratulate Mr. Shively for receiving the ovation award from the Cumberland Business District.
Giving the ovation.
Were there any other nominees?
No, I came in first in a race, there's only one person.
All right, anybody else? I believe school starts next week, is that correct?
Yes, it is correct.
So when you're driving to and from work, watch out for the little kiddies.
And the teachers.
And the teachers.
Don't hit any of the teachers.
All right, this meeting's adjourned.